Okay, good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock and therefore we're going to call the San Bruno City Council Meeting of July 27th, 2021 to order. And if I could, please ask our city clerk to do well.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Yeah.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. Thank you very much, and I appreciate and would ask our council member Linda Mason to please lead us in the pledge of c.
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Mason. Now we'll move on to item number three, public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. It is council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and or action where appropriate. Where appropriate, the Brown Act prohibits this council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized. And if you do wish, if you could raise your virtual hand at this time. And I, we can start having the city clerk call in the folks, please.
First, it's Ken Ibera.
Good evening, this is Ken Ibera, Lucia Court, mayor and council. I would like to formally object to the city's policy on revocable encroachment permits. In the last three years, on behalf of homeowners, while applying for building permits, there have been at least three properties with existing structures such as walkway steps, concrete curbs, or brick planters that were cited to be encroaching in the city right of way, which is typically an area from two feet to six feet behind the sidewalk. These homeowners are required to either remove the structure or apply for a revocable encroachment permit, which allows the structure to remain but requires a minimum $1 million liability insurance policy and a permit fee of $572. I object to this policy because it appears that only owners who are applying for building permits are being cited for the encroachment and being forced to pay the fee. A neighbor next door can have the same encroachment but will be exempt until they apply for a building permit, if ever. There are numerous encroachments throughout this city. I would estimate hundreds, if not over a thousand encroachments, that will not be cited by the city. Again, only those who apply for a building permit are cited. I propose the city either waive the $572 permit fee required to be paid by building permit applicants or embark on a citywide program that cites every single encroachment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ibera, for your comments. I am not seeing any other hands up. This will be your last opportunity under public comments for folks that are with, joining us this evening if they wish to speak. Not seeing any, we will move on to item number four, announcements and presentations. The first one is just as a reminder that the regular city council meeting for August 10th, 2021 is canceled. That has been our normal practice to cancel one of the meetings in August. And so we will have one meeting in August, it will be the fourth Tuesday of that month. Item B, St. Bruno's Catholic Church will host a free COVID-19 vaccine clinic, providing an opportunity to get the first dose on Sunday, August 1st, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., followed by the second dose on August 22nd. Registration is encouraged and can be completed at myturn.ca.gov or by calling 1-833-422-4255. That's 1-833-422-4255. All are welcome, including walk-ups, and regardless of immigration status. St. Bruno's is located at 555 West San Bruno Avenue in San Bruno. Very quickly, you know, I think it's important for all of us, and I know that the San Bruno in this county has done very well at getting vaccinated. I believe all of my colleagues have been vaccinated. And that is just an indication that we believe it is important and it's for many people's safety. And just going to an event, I haven't been with some folks since March of 2020 and actually speaking to a couple of them, these gentlemen, last Monday, to tell me of relatives that they had lost due to COVID-19. So it is serious, it is still apparent and evident, and the Delta virus is very, very contagious. So I, and I believe my colleagues who have been vaccinated, all encourage all of us to do our part, and it is right there for all to get, and again, it is free. Let's move on to item number C. The city of San Bruno has created the Bay Hill Specific Plan Virtual Education Room to provide information about the Bay Hill Specific Plan and its planning process. Learn more and explore at www.sanbruno.ca.gov/BayHillEdRoom. And I'm going to turn it over to Pamela Wu to briefly about that and show us a little bit of that virtual room.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, and good evening, everyone. My name is Pamela Wu. I am the Community and Economic Development Director for the City of San Bruno. I have the pleasure of introducing the Bay Hill Virtual Learning Room website to you. If you will allow me to share my screen. And I apologize in advance, I was hoping for a live tour of the website, but due to the amount of information that's available on the website, it's going to cause a dramatic slowdown. So I decided to do a snip shot of the website, provide you an overview and do a PowerPoint, traditional PowerPoint fashion. So this is the first homepage. When you log into the website, click on anywhere on the page and will take you to the lobby where a greeter will greet you. You will have to start by clicking him, and then once you click on him, the buttons will be activated. He'll give you an overview of this virtual room. And also, before you leave the lobby, make sure you sign in for information. That includes your name, your email, your contact, where do you live, so we can generate a list of interest party to notify those of who have signed up of the upcoming event. Once you leave the lobby, you will first go to the exploration room, if you choose, by clicking on the tab on top. And also, get into the room, look at the various information that is available in the room. For instance, there is the vast tentative map for Phase One, a beautiful coloring for Phase One, the Bay Hill Specific Plan itself, and also there is a 3D life model that's in the center of the room. Looking around the rest of the exploration room, there's information pertaining to the general plan, the zoning code, any information that has been made public will be available in this room. Looking around, you'll imagine that you're standing next to the YouTube headquarters, Niall One Cherry, as if the building is right next to you. Before you exit the exploration room, make sure that you toggle on the tab that says Existing Versus Proposed, while the image will change from the existing condition to the future 3D model. Once you're done with the exploration room, you can go into the presentation room by clicking on the tab again in the middle of the website. Again, there is a lot of information, relevant information that's available, such as a zoom-in feature for any of the video that you wish to see. And the female presenter will have five different presentations for you that talks about the purpose of doing a specific plan, why we're doing this, when did the city start? And it goes into the specifics of the Phase One development, how tall is the building, how many square feet, what are the major components? And the very last tab, Project Timeline, will give you an idea of what is the upcoming milestone. For instance, the entire project is tentatively scheduled for the August 17th Planning Commission. By clicking on the tab, a slideshow will pop up and also that has a button that takes you directly to the city Bay Hill Specific Plan website. This is an interactive website designer for you to spend a lot of time to learn, to understand, and also to get ready for the upcoming public hearing for Bay Hill Specific Plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments and showing a little bit of that virtual room that folks can go on to and learn about. So thank you. I've seen no hands up at this ti- oh, there you go. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Medina. This is an exciting website. I was wondering if a YouTube presentation on using that website could be made, kind of like what was just conducted now, so that people can kind of be a little familiar, going to YouTube, seeing that this is how I navigate the site, if that would be helpful, just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will go ahead and move on to consent calendar. Item five, all items are considered routine or implemented in an earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. So obviously, we have items A through M, quite a few. Are there any items that colleagues wish to pull for a separate vote? Not seeing any, Vice Mayor?
I'm sorry, I jumped the gun there a little bit, Mr. Mayor. I was just interested in pulling one of the items for a discussion and perhaps a modification.
Which item, please?
That would be 5F.
5, thank you. Are there any other items for separate discussion or clarification? Not for a separate vote, so Councilmember Mason?
Just wanted to click to clarify, there was a modification on the minutes. So I don't know if it need, why would you say, I guess, per discussion?
So you want that item to have discussion on the minutes? Item, where, item D?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. Any other items? Okay, at this time, we have item D and F to have further discussion on. And if there's anybody from the community, you can put up your virtual hand now, but we're going to start with D and then we'll go to F. So first item is D, approve the regular meeting minutes for the regular meetings of July 13th, 2021. Councilmember Mason?
Oh, I just, I received an email from a clerk just stating that there was an update made or a modification made on the minutes. And so I don't want to put words in her mouth, I just wanted to put on the record that there was a change in the minutes. And I think Ms. Thurman can speak as well if she'd like.
Yeah, I think we all received an email and that those modifications, and somebody will correct me if I'm incorrect, were already within the packet. Okay?
Not in the original packet that was sent out.
The correction that was made to the minutes was under item 6A, the tally that was placed after the direction provided to staff was removed, but the direction to staff still stands.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else from anyone on the minutes? Oh, that was item D. Let's move on to item F. Is adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a five-year contract with West Valley Construction for the annual water system spot repair services in an amount not to exceed $200,000 for the year 2021, 2022. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to thank staff for answering some of my initial questions I had on this item. My concern with the item is how there were no bids on this project and then moving forward in approving a five-year contract for a contractor without competition. So I'm hesitant with that. However, I will suggest that I could support it provided the staff comes back with a report on what was completed in this upcoming year, and then it would be okay. Just, I just wanted to kind of have a little more clarity on what's happening with this contract.
Councilmember Hamilton?
I had a similar concern with the five-year contract. And, but then, you know, reading deeply into the, into the report that came along in the packet, it was clear that the city can terminate the contract at any time. So that made me more comfortable with it. The, you know, my understanding is that we've been pleased with the work that West Valley has done for us in the past and that we have no expectation that this would change in the future. But nevertheless, we are not locked in for all five years if circumstances should change. So that's what made me more comfortable with it, and I wanted to, I had this on my list to pull as well, but it had already been pulled, because I thought it would be important to state that here in the meeting for folks who might just read the agenda item and not necessarily read the packet.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Mason?
I guess just a more general question about when we have only a single response. So does the city make an attempt to make calls and just see if there's any, and garner additional interest? And then when we don't receive responses, does the city call some contractors that we thought would be interested that didn't answer to say, hey, why didn't you, why didn't you respond? Or why didn't you submit a bid?
Okay, thank you, council members, for your questions and comments. Staff, city manager, or is there somebody who would like to speak to some of those items?
Sure, Javon Brogan, city manager. I'll ask Haywon Ritchie to address the questions that were raised on this item. Haywon, I know you provided a number of their responses, but can you go through the spot repair process, what it's typically used for, the amount that we normally spend, the 80,000 to 90,000 over the last few years? But then also talk about the contracting process, as well as the contracts code and the challenges we have to encourage people that did not submit a bid to then submit.
Thank you, Ms. Ritchie?
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council members. Thank you, my name is Haywon Ritchie, Interpublic Works Director. I heard a number of concerns and questions come up. Firstly, it was competitively bid. We advertise, as we do, all of our projects that are over a certain amount, and it turned out we received no bids. We actually had also included in there the contractors that we've worked with previously and sent them the bid package, but they had also not responded. And when that occurs, there's a section in the code, and let me pull that up quick. It is section, Public Contract Code, Section 20166, which states if no bids are received, the legislative body may have the project done without further complying with this chapter. So what that means is we did not receive any bids, and so we contacted West Valley, who had previously performed this work favorably for the city. And they were actually one of the contractors we had, you know, provided the bid to. And historically, these types of bids are difficult to solicit because contractors typically like large projects, they like to get the work done and then to leave. These projects are small, they're sporadic, because they're emergency as needed. And so, you know, it's, this goes for sidewalk repair projects that are more on-call based. This is not unique to the main replacement. And so, because this is a, it was advertised as a multi-year, just because there's an amount of administrative time that goes into procuring, and then with the low interest, you know, I think we also, the other component is that there was a cap as to what the increase in price can be. And so that locks in, you know, the reasonable rate that we were able to obtain to a 3% and so that they couldn't raise their prices on us. And to be honest, I'm more concerned that they will ask not to renew the contract than it is for us to say, you know, we don't want, we want them to do the work. It is challenging work to get on an emergency basis. And so, in a way, I think we were fortunate to have West Valley agree, who does good work. I believe I answered the majority of the questions, I apologize if I missed any.
I think Councilmember Mason also just wanted to know, and she'll stop me if I'm saying incorrectly, just about the process. So we didn't have a lot of interest, do we reach back out to people, do we call folks, do we follow up in that?
Yes, we did contact West Valley to ask why they had not. I guess they were just not interested at that point. They may have been potentially a bit confused by the bid package as well. And because it's unusual, because it's an on-call, you know, where contractors are typically just seeing or, you know, setting up prices, that this is the work that they're supposed to do. And so I think it just wasn't something that, that they had, you know, had interest in bidding on, but I think we contacted them later and, you know, in attempting to procure a contract, we were able to work with them on that.
Okay, so I would just say that I understand now the process that we just went through, but I think just for future reference, it would be nice to reach out to more than one of the contractors that didn't respond. Even now, I mean, even after tonight, just to say, hey, what can we do next time so that we get more of a competitive bidding process? But I understand why you chose this contractor to call, I just want to make sure that we're reaching out to more than one contractor and hopefully improving our process if need be. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, city manager.
Yeah, I just want to also note that we did reach out to multiple contractors when the bid first went out. And only after there were no bids did we reach out to West Valley. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Well, colleagues, are there additional questions or comments on F? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so I just wanted to see if the city manager felt there was anything wrong with having staff report back prior to the beginning of the next year of this contract.
Sure, so the request is that for this contract, council would like a report prior to the 22, 23 fiscal year on what was done by West Valley under spot repairs.
Yes.
So, and off agenda memo, we can put that in the work plan to provide. I think it would be nice to do the whole fiscal year, so if council is amenable, I think giving that off agenda item at the beginning of next fiscal year, that way we can cover the entire 21 to 22 fiscal year, which would seem like a nice cutoff point and have no problem with providing that report.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to support the Vice Mayor's recommendation for that report. In the past, I've asked for some statistics on how our repair program or our replacement program or renovation has affected our requirement to do emergency repairs. And it was the expectation that as we renovate our infrastructure, that those emergency repairs should become less prevalent. And so it would be good if, within that reporting, we also have a historical perspective on what has been spent in the past and what has been alleviated by our upgrades that we've done over the past few years.
And I think with the city manager, it would be a full budget cycle year, which I'm seeing people were amenable to that. And then in concurrence with the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Salazar as well, for myself. So if there's, is there any other comments? Or is there action by the council in regards to consent items A through M? Councilmember Hamilton?
I'll make a motion that we approve consent, the consent calendar, items 5A through 5N.
The Vice Mayor has seconded, motion made by Hamilton, seconded by Vice Mayor Medina. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number six, city session. I'm a authorized city manager to finalize and release the reimagining Tanfran land use fact sheet. And before we continue, I will be recusing myself, due to my close proximity or within the thousand feet, that is now the state wall, it used to be 500, unfortunately. Not unfortunately that I'm handing it over to the Vice Mayor, because he has a good last name, Vice Mayor Medina, but that I'm not able to participate within a very important topic. But this time, I will recuse myself and will be brought back after you folks have done what you need to do. Thanks.
All right, I think this is in the hands of City Manager Brogan. The stage is all yours.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Medina, members of the council and members of the public. I'd also like to ask the city clerk to make sure that Jay Sholl from CBRE is brought into the presentation room.
Javon, I'm sorry to interrupt, he is currently not in the meeting, I'm looking out for him, though.
Okay.
Melissa, Jay is having trouble, he's locking on, just give him a minute, I just called him.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we will get settled. Why don't I begin with my introductory comments? And I really was going to start by saying, wow, 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 wow. What an exciting item we have before us tonight, reimagining Tanfran. Javon Brogan, city manager, I'll be joined shortly by Jay Sholl from CBRE, and we'll talk about his efforts on this project and his work today. I also want to thank our Community and Economic Development Director Pamela Wu, who will also be available to the city council for any questions and has done a lot of the heavy lifting to get to where we are today with this visioning document. You know, as someone that studies planning and economic development planning academically, this is an amazing, amazing opportunity for the city of San Bruno. Forty-four acres, probably be one of the top three development sites in Northern California, really sitting at the nexus of 101, 280, 380. A bar station attached to it, Caltrain, high-capacity bus ride along El Camino Real, so centrally located in the peninsula between San Francisco and the Silicon Valley, and so close to SFO, you barely have to get on the freeway. This site for the city of San Bruno has historically been an amazing resource, and it is our hope in partnering with both the property owners and the investors that are interested in Tanfran that we can reimagine Tanfran and have it be that locale of destination, e-commerce office and community collaboration. We're really here, 50 years since the mall opened. The Tanfran Mall opened in 1971. We also sit here 122 years since the Tanfran racetrack opened, and we all know the story of Seabiscuit, and we all know the story of this site. This site has amazing history tied to it. The first airplane to take off and land on a armored naval cruise vessel left from Tanfran Racetrack and landed back on Tanfran Racetrack after landing on the USS Pennsylvania. We also know that this site was home to the Tanfran Assembly Center in a dark period in American history, where for a total of 171 days, it was home to over 8,000 Japanese-Americans who were interned there. But we also know that this site is a site that has undergone significant renovations. We know that in 2005, there was a significant renovation. And as of late, both Sears and JCPenney's, the two anchors on the western portion of the mall, have, one has closed and the other is currently undergoing a liquidation process and will close at some point. And so- And so, uh, the city really launched this effort that we're calling reimagining Tanfran, uh, for a number of reasons. Uh, we know that the, uh, retail market, uh, has changed significantly over the last ten to fifteen years. How customers shop, the experience, uh, that they wanna shop in has, uh, has had an impact on malls across the country and has certainly had an impact on Tanfran. Uh, but we also stand here today with the fact that all three of the privately held parcels, uh, at Tanfran are actively being marketed. Uh, QIC, which is the, um, a, a pension, a state pension firm, uh, from Australia, uh, that owns the mall proper. So that, that middle third that's in the image that's in your top, uh, left-hand corner, uh, and the JCPenney's parcel are both independently actively seeking buyers for the site. And, and so they, uh, they, they have the site, um, uh, out and, uh, are, are seeking buyers. The, the graphic in the middle, uh, shows you that our Tanfran site, uh, is the number one site by land acres, uh, in the JCPenney's sale. JCPenney's is currently selling twenty-five of their store locations across the country. Uh, and the Tanfran site is biggest at fifteen, uh, at just over fifteen acres. We have Seritage, which is a REIT, a real estate investment trust that holds, uh, a former Sears, uh, locations. And they are actively seeking investors for a biotech campus and an innovation hub, uh, on these, the Sears, uh, portion of the property. And so with that knowledge, the, the city really engaged CBRE to help organize current and future owners around a shared vision. Uh, and the document that we've developed, uh, that Jay Shoal will talk about, uh, we're calling it our, our fact sheet or reimagining Tanfran. And it really outlines a, a vision of a mixed-use, transit-oriented development that has a blend of commercial, retail, housing, which we all know is a desperate, a desperate need here in the peninsula, as well as a potential hospitality use. Uh, we have designated a minimum of a thousand housing units, knowing that this location, uh, as a TLD site, uh, is an excellent location for housing. Uh, and so CBRE, uh, will, will now talk about their work. Uh, they will talk about the conversations that they will, that, that they've had, uh, and also present that fact sheet. Uh, at the conclusion of today's presentation, uh, the ask of council is to authorize the finalization and the release of this fact sheet, uh, to both the development community, the property owners, uh, as well as the public, uh, here in San Bruno. So I, I do believe Jay Shoal is in the room.
Uh, good evening, Jovan. Yes, yes, I am on.
Perfect.
Would, would love to present, could you give me, um, sort of sharing rights? Because I've actually tweaked the, the doc a bit since you and I last spoke. So I've got a updated version, I think. I didn't realize this was going to be, uh, a virtual presentation and I was, uh, a little bit too bold in my, in my, uh, my font size and everything. I thought I was gonna be projecting this onto a screen in a room with you all. So, um, I've, I've had to right-size it. So just bear with me for a sec.
Mr. Shoal, you should have permission to share your screen.
Great. And so can you see my screen now?
No, we are unable to see your screen.
Can you see my screen now? Should be on the cover page.
Yes.
Great. Uh, well, thank you all. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be with you all. Um, I can't tell you what a pleasure it's been to actually be engaged with Jovan and Pamela Wu and the city staff. Um, this is one of those rare opportunities that a professional gets to actually, um, think about almost a, a clean slate in terms of a forty-four acre transit-oriented development site, uh, um, in the middle of a, of a, of a city that, that, uh, you can just use your imagination in terms of what are the possibilities? Given that we know that JCPenney's is in play and definitely is going to be doing something to transform the, the center. Um, Seritage has already approached the city, so we know that they have intentions to actually redevelop their portion of the site. And we've had conversations, as Jovan said, with Queensland Investment Corp. Um, and, um, Jovan, I don't think I've shared this with you, but I've just learned in the last few hours that, uh, they may be shelving their disposition strategy and they be, they may be holding for a while longer to see, to play a more active role in terms of how, how they may wanna participate in transforming the mall itself as well. So I think we'll learn more as we go along here. So we, we were engaged to actually come up with a, a vision in terms of what would any prudent investor developer be thinking about in terms of creating a mixed-use environment? And so since all the various participants here are, are gonna either sell and/or recapitalize and reinvestment in their, in their particular parcel, um, giving some certainty around what the city's expectations are in terms of what, uh, the city needs. What are the community sort of aspects of that, that, that these developers and investors should address is really the, the purpose behind the fact sheet. So it's really, we've been engaged to, uh, we've been engaged to actually interact with all the participant parties, proactively manage their expectations and work with them to identify redevelopment solutions that are really aligned with this vision, that are financially viable, that's in everyone's best interest, and that provide sort of long-term sort of community benefits to the city of San Bruno. And since I was late to arrive, is this interactive or should I just sort of blast through this, the presentation? And, and should we have a conversation at the end, Jovan? Just not sure.
Absolutely. Keep going and we, we will, uh, talk at the end.
Okay, great. So, so the property is actually owned by four, uh, property owners. You know, BART and is one of those four. Uh, JCPenney's, you can see there on the right portion of the slide, is, uh, is the, the property that's in the sales process today. It's our understanding that, um, Newmark is in conversations with one, one investor. In other words, they picked a buyer and they are negotiating a purchase and sale contract. Um, whether or not they're successful in that, we don't know. And we certainly don't know the, the identity of who that buyer is at this point in time. I could speculate and guess, but I don't think that's in anybody's best interest at the moment. So right now, they're unknown. Um, QIC owns the enclosed portion of the mall and Target, um, is a participant. They're a long-term ground lessee. Um, their ground lease runs into twenty-seven or so. So we can almost consider them almost a fee simple owner, uh, in terms of their, their views are certainly long-term. And Seritage, the former Sears owner, has the other almost third of the property there. And as part of their parcel, the Century Theaters that is there is also a long-term, um, ground lessee. So in effect, um, there is a reciprocal easement agreement that actually binds all five of these parties together. Um, and it has very, various restrictions, uh, with respect to how the property can, needs to be sort of used. All fifty years old, um, all geared towards what a retail enclosed mall was, should be, um, in the last forty or fifty years. But it's certainly not, um, really relevant with respect to sort of how anyone would operate a, a property like this today. Not germane is probably a better term. Um, and so all the parties realize that in order to create these loose, these, these new uses on-site, most of which are prohibited by the REA and are also prohibited under the current planning from the city, it's gonna require participation and collaboration from all the constituent parties. So the vision. So I would say that the last sixteen months has been unprecedented in all of our lives. And, uh, we, we've, we're seeing such a huge sort of social, cultural and economic shift, not only as a result of the pandemic, which is obvious to all of us, given that we're doing this virtually today. Um, it, it's also affected us culturally. The, the murder of George Floyd has really sort of brought back a sense of community and the importance of social welfare of our neighbors and our fellow citizens in ways that we haven't seen since the nineteen sixties. Um, so there's a huge shift there. And, and we've also seen some of the economic disparities that, um, have been highlighted by the pandemic as well. Uh, we're also seeing guys like me are beginning to phase out of the, the, the workforce, the field job markets. Boomers are retiring and over the next, um, decade, there's gonna be one of the largest transfer of wealth from boomers to millennials in the history of our country. So those are gonna create some significant economic shifts, um, that, that you've seen play out here in the pandemic. If you look at downtown San Francisco, for example, um, the financial district, it is a ghost town today. But if you look at the neighborhoods in San Francisco where there's housing, there's commerce, there's, there's retail, um, those places are still resilient and they've, they've really sort of thrived well in, in many of those neighborhoods throughout the Bay Area. Um, those communities have taken back the streets. And so there's been much more of a focus on pedestrian access, less vehicular dependency. Um, those, those shifts are here to stay. They're not trends. They're, they're trends. They're not just a, a result of remedies that take care of sort of how we, um, get together during the pandemic. And so how we, how we look at housing, how we interact in terms of working, living and playing are all in transition. And any investor or developer today, all of these aspects of a transit-oriented development are considerations that they are gonna put on their whiteboard as well. This is a thirty-thousand-foot view, high-level view of what any prudent investor would wanna consider as it addresses a community like the city of San Bruno with respect to how do we deal with placemaking? And so the various sort of uses here, office tech, life sciences, housing, hospitality, are all prohibited, both under current planning and the reciprocal easement agreement. And so to begin to have dialogues about that, we need to have all the five parties, um, at the table, sort of willing to discuss what's the, what's the right mix of these various uses. The city has put a marker down with respect to housing to address the housing crisis. Not only is San Bruno experiencing, but we're experiencing statewide. And so the Tanfran site is really ideal for providing at least a housing, uh, one thousand housing units on-site. And so that's something that we've already communicated with the fee simple owners with respect to the city's goal with respect as they think about remaking Tanfran, that they need to include in their mix, uh, housing. I would say that so far Seritage, um, has been looking at this as purely a million-square-foot life sciences park. And, uh, the JCPenney's marketing and sales team at Newmark have been really touting life sciences as the primary focus of their value, uh, creation on that portion of the site as well. So now we're, um, introducing housing as a critical component in terms of how do we get this to be sort of the cool place to be at San Bruno. It's probably, probably, uh, my term in terms of coolness, but I, I, we want this to be, sort of have a buzz and a vibe to it, that this is a place where people wanna come, meet, congregate, hang out, in addition to going to work, um, in addition to commuting on BART. So the other aspects of what's gonna make this a sort of twenty-first century, state-of-the-art development is taking into account sort of health and wellness, which is now top of mind as a result of the pandemic, and sustainability. I mean, climate change is the other thing that's creating a lot of social anxiety today. Uh, California wildfires, the flooding you saw in Europe in the last couple of weeks, uh, flooding and the heats, the, the, the excessive temperatures in the Pacific Northwest are all examples that climate change is real. And as a result of that, um, a good portion of our community is really, really focused on how do we deal with that? And how do we deal with that in a sustainable, resilient manner? So trying to target sort of carbon neutrality as a goal here over the life of this project is something that we think is a prudent goal that we're gonna set for the city. Uh, and again, this is TOD, sort of access to, to pedestrian focus and the, the fact that you can sort of live, work and walk to, to any aspect of your lifestyle and experience you want throughout the Bay Area is critically important. So sort of breaking that sort of high-level thirty-thousand-foot view down into the various components in terms of looking at this from the city's perspective, we've broken it down into infrastructure and environment and how we'd like the, the investors to be viewing this, community and housing and connectivity and mobility. Uh, with respect to sort of market drivers, uh, you know, the forces that are shaping the, the real estate landscape today are all about sort of how do you deliver sort of low-carbon performance buildings, high, high-performance, low-carbon buildings? And so again, I, I think that all of our, the parties that are involved here are up to speed on these things as a goal. And I don't think that we're imposing anything that's onerous or different than the way they'd approach this process anyway. Um, adopting a circular and sort of economic principles with respect to both the construction of the project, sort of living and working here and the long-term asset management perspective, again, I don't think is a new sort of point for any of these participants in this thing. It's, it's really saying, this is important to the city. How do we align up and align on these things? And the delivery comes really at the tactical reality of once, once we get together and they actually start to, the massing plan portion of this thing and sort of where, where various components of this thing end up on the site is really gonna be where the overall sort of reality of the landscape starts to shake, take shape. So the community and housing, again, housing the thousand units, um, we want it to be suitable for all age groups and cultures. Um, we want a diverse product offering with respect to housing. So a combination of for sale and for rent would be ideal. And, and mess are the obvious. Clearly, we want all the developers, investors to engage with neighboring communities to understand sort of what the, the surrounding community is thinking about, what the right solution set here is. And then finally on the page, uh, the connectivity and the mobility. Clearly, uh, the BART station there is an incredible incentive in terms of, um, activating lifestyles with respect. Uh, I can be, um, without a car. I can go from my home to my office in the city or my office down in San Jose in the Silicon Valley, uh, without ever having to get into a vehicle. Um, what a great amenity. And clearly, we want to imbue into this thing, you know, nature and green spaces designed into the new streetscape and landscape for, um, this site. It includes a combination of sort of public and private open spaces. Process. So in order to get the changes that we'd like to see happen, it requires an amendment to the city's general plan. Uh, it will require an amendment to the reciprocal, uh, easement agreement that Tanfran has now imposed upon it. It requires establishing a new specific plan, uh, which amends the, the zoning across the site or the allowance of these different uses, life sciences, housing, hospitality and anything else that comes into the fray. Uh, uh, environmental, um, and EIR required here in terms of all parties wanting to participate in that. And then there are a couple of other sort of compatibility plan for the San Francisco Airport land use compatibility plan. San Mateo County Comprehensive Airport land use plan is another sort of aspect of getting the box ticked to get this thing to a point where a construction permit can be ordered, sort of issued. One of the things I love about Pamela is she's actually committed to, if the parties are aligned and ready to rock and roll, and you can see in the upper right-hand corner, we're hoping that occurs by the end of this year, early part of twenty twenty-one, that if we can do this as expediently as possible, that literally from the time that we've agreed on sort of a master plan, a specific plan, start to finish is twenty-four months, which would be just ideal with respect to the investors. It creates certainty, um, and certainty means valuation and valuation enhancement. Then finally, CBRE's role is really, um, to manage the interaction between all the parties, uh, to create that alignment, uh, to work collaboratively, to get to a design solution, um, and a financially viable sort of specific plan that works for both the owners and the city. Uh, we'll bring everybody to the table, uh, to work on achieving those goals. And those goals, simply put, are really, we want smart, green and accessible for all, just to keep it simple. Um, and we're gonna do it in a, in a, basically in an open and transparent manner, just to make sure that, you know, societal justice and, and the aspect of equity is top of mind. So Jovan, actually, the, the last slide is yours.
Yeah. So, thank you, Jay. Uh, members of the city council and, and the public. Uh, just a last word on next steps. So, uh, the next steps that we've outlined is, uh, after our discussion today and, uh, direction from council, uh, we will move forward with, uh, finalizing this fact sheet and distribute it to property owners, uh, the potential investors, uh, that Jay, uh, has been in communication with, as well as, uh, the wider investment community that may be interested in Tanfran, uh, as well as our public here in the city of San Bruno, uh, and San Mateo County. Uh, we will continue to have meetings, uh, with, uh, current property owners and potential investors, as Jay mentioned, uh, convening, uh, everyone around a shared vision. In many ways, uh, this project is geared at, uh, being proactive, being ahead of the ball, uh, not, uh, waiting until people purchase the property and come to the city and say, here's, here's my vision. What I, here's, here's what I wanna develop as a new property owner. But instead, getting out ahead of it, articulating a vision and then working around a shared, a shared vision, uh, that, uh, you, the city council, uh, will, uh, will, will confirm, uh, and then work through the, the master planning process. And that master planning process is really the process where we're really gonna sit down, uh, and, and put pen to, pen to pad, uh, do a lot of amazing, uh, brainstorming, visioning. And really, uh, the goal is to arrive at a vision that is beneficial for the San Bruno community. Uh, the, uh, property owners, um, uh, and, uh, provides all of the, uh, amazing public ground benefits, uh, that are articulated in the document. As far as the sample timeline, and again, the caveat is this is subject to owner participation. Uh, uh, we would, uh, like to begin the master plan process in late twenty-one or early twenty-two. Uh, that, uh, as per the- That, as per the schedule we we talked about, is a 12 to 15 month process. So depending on the conclusion of that, we would like to have the master plan adopted in either the sometime between the winter of '22 or the summer of '23. And then we've also outlined a process where all of the project specific entitlements, and that's when the property owner post master plan will come in and say, this is the building I want to build, have it entitled and have a construction permit. Each of those phases, we estimate at a six to nine month base. And so depending on when those come in, we would launch those and be done anywhere from 12 to 18 months. And so realistically, for the public, these things take a long time. They always take a long time. We will partner with the property owners to move the process and do as much concurrent processing as we can. But these large master plans take several years and the entitlements take some time. And so in the normal cadence and the normal expectation, it's important to note that, you know, likely will not be a groundbreaking here until '24 or '25. And that's an important process step for us all to walk into this knowing. The development community knows it, but as a community that just really wants to see that revitalized Tanforan now, it's helpful to to set that expectation. So that concludes our presentation. We're happy to take any questions or direction from the city council. Again, thank you to Jay Schill, thank you to Pamela Wu. We're just beginning.
Excellent. I suppose we should go to my colleagues. Do we have any questions? And I won't be able to send you hands here, so I'm not.
Tom has his hand up.
I have my hand up, but I realized I put my hand up as you said, questions. I don't have any questions. I have some comments.
Okay, let's go ahead and do it.
So I am so incredibly excited to authorize the release of this fact sheet tonight. I wholeheartedly support this effort. As everyone on this call knows, I'm a lifelong resident of San Bruno. I know firsthand that this mall has been a vital piece of San Bruno's story for generations. My late mother worked at this mall. Both of my sisters worked at that mall. My very first job when I was 15 years old in nineteen was at this mall. And Tanforan has served as a gathering place for San Brunans for the last couple of generations. But, you know, we all know that Tanforan's been struggling for some time now. And this is not the fault of the merchants. This is not for the property managers. It's simply because time marches on and we've entered a new, a new era where traditional models for retail are no longer the best use for a place like Tanforan. This is a amazing opportunity for us to provide housing, to provide jobs, community space, retail and other commercial opportunities for the next generations and to do it in a sustainable way. I want to thank our city staff and the team that they've assembled for being proactive and getting out ahead of this and being transparent with our potential partners who may be interested in the site regarding where we stand as a city on our vision for the use of Tanforan. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Councilwoman Mason?
Yeah, thank you for that presentation. I just wanted to ask where you have seen in these sorts of developments, what has been the most successful? So has it been mixed? Has it been all one, you know, one area? And then I'm just curious to know from your perspective as a consultant.
Well, Councilwoman Mason, is that specifically around the transformation redevelopment of an enclosed mall? Or is it?
Oh, no, no, I am sorry. No, I wouldn't say around a mall. I would say, you know, the idea of this next to transit, we're going through this whole transition right now as a city. What would you think is probably the the best fit for Tanforan right now?
I think the mixed use sort of development path that you're on, I mean, that that and that's why I use the example of the San Francisco Financial District. That's not a mixed use community. That's that's a basically a series of office towers with a couple of residential towers thrown in, mostly vacant even in the best of times because there are foreign investors that don't live there. I mean, it it just shows that that resilient communities require a mix of uses and they they require connectivity. And that's the really beautiful thing about Tanforan is it's a large sort of slate of land that you could really envision creating sort of the new sort of best of all worlds that creating a new community can create today on a transit site. I mean, so to be able to basically have employers reduce their carbon footprint because somebody's not getting in their car to go to work, they're getting, they're basically walking from their home to the BART station and taking BART into their office. I mean, it's, it offers sort of all the components for the future long term success of this thing if we get it right in terms of transforming sort of the mall. And the and the and the tactical and sort of delicate balance of this thing is, is sort of what's the right combination and location of the housing units versus the office slash life sciences versus the retail, given that we've got three constituent parties that, you know, may or may not share a vision there. And I think that's the work that we have to do is to get everybody on that same sort of page with respect to the shared vision, that the combination of these things, the synergy created by this mixed use experience is actually going to create higher value than if they created sort of disparate, three different sort of solutions in the same location.
Right. So, so I, similar to Tom, but not necessarily a native San Brunan, went to Tanforan growing up. It was a safe place to go with a bunch of friends in middle school and high school. It used to have a movie theater. And I think, you know, today going to Tanforan makes me somewhat sad, to be really honest. I went to Hillsdale the other day and it was even in a pandemic booming. I mean, there were people eating at the food court, there were people walking around, they have a new movie theater. I just have been recently driving by Stone Town quite often because of a, just because of some responsibilities I've had. And, you know, they've put in a Whole Foods, a Target, they're talking about housing right now, mixed with retail. And it appears to be really the future of what we're looking at in the Bay Area of repurposing malls. We, as everybody on, I believe that has been following our meetings knows, we have desperate need for housing. We, when we were looking at Mills Park, a number of people, both in support of and against Mills Park, I think everyone was saying the same thing to the council, put housing in Tanforan. When we look at businesses and where businesses can find a home, I've heard from many people, well, why don't you guys build more office space in Tanforan? And when we look at retail and the need and the loss that we've really suffered in this pandemic, losing both Sears and looks like JCPenney as well, not only do residents still need a place to go and shop, but you also need the revenue, the city needs the revenue and we can't lose it. And so what you've presented to us has really answered the desires of many, if not most of the residents here in San Bruno. And so I'm really excited to see what comes before the city. I think that you have a council here who is really open minded and looking forward to continuing the renaissance that's happening in San Bruno. We have development coming, we have YouTube, we saw earlier in the presentation, the Bay Hill Plan. And the Bay Hill Plan links directly to, by crossing the street to Tanforan, it's probably about a 10 minute walk. And then for those of you who may be watching and aren't so familiar with San Bruno, we also have a downtown streetscape plan. And if you look at the three at a, you know, from a bird's eye level, you really have a beautiful triangle where an individual can easily walk from one point to the next within 10 minutes. So, you know, I I'm really excited to see this hopefully come to fruition. And and I think that when, I'm going to say when this comes to us and be very hopeful, but I will be supporting the the future vision. So thank you so much for bringing this to us tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mason. If anybody else has a comment, or Councilman Salazar, do you have anything?
Thank you, yeah. Just just a few comments. I don't have any questions, but I did want to thank our city manager and his staff for bringing this to us. This is a unique opportunity. It's not something that comes along all the time. And I know in the past, we've, you know, that after the last renovation of of the mall, it had a rebirth that lasted for a while and it was appropriate for the time and given the constraints, but it really seems like the stars are aligning around all of these properties. And and I think it's great that that we're being proactive and looking, looking forward to some possibilities, sort of charting that ahead of time and not being reactive or waiting until sometimes it's too late to make those decisions. So definitely appreciate this coming forward. It looks, looks like a great vision. The the marketing piece looks fantastic, so I'm definitely in favor of moving forward on that.
Thank you, Councilman Salazar. I'm going to make my comment and then we'll open up for public comment. But I think, I think our council here has pretty much hit it on the head. This is an amazing opportunity. This is a time that has just happened, that the pieces are together, that we have three different owners of Tanforan that are interested in doing something different. And I am behind this. I, I, this has so many positive things. And I wanted to express my appreciation to our city manager and to our, our, our team to proactively put this together, that putting this fact sheet and letting the developing, the developers out know, out there know that there's no better size, place, location anywhere. I'm a little biased, of course, because I'm from San Bruno, but drop, drop right at transit, there's no better place, 44 acres. So thanks again for all of this. And I'll go ahead and open it up for a public comment. City Clerk Thurman?
Yes, the first speaker, actually, so far the only speaker is Paul Wapinski.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, the speaker from C B R E kept saying that we want, and I'm wondering, where did he get the guidance for what the facility is planning to be? Was that something that was, that is that his opinion or is that something that the city gave him to put the thousand houses and all the biotech or whatever was going to be in there? And then my other thing is when, when we do this plan, we never include what, what is the city infrastructure going to be to support that? So if there's a thousand houses, figure three people per house, that's another 3,000 people. How many, what's the ratio of police officers to citizens? So how many, you know, how many police officers do we have to hire? How many fire, firefighters? You know, do we have enough fire engines to cover that much space? Do we need to buy another one? Is there going to, do we have to build another fire station? You know, that, all those questions that that are in my mind and I have three minutes to talk. But, you know, what other city services do we have to to provide that's going to come out of the city's coffers and maybe not the developers? Or can we somehow, if we need to have that, all that infrastructure increase for the city, is there some way you can pass that on to the developers so that there's some kind of revenue stream so that the the city taxpayers don't have to increase, or to pay for all that stuff? Those are my questions and comments.
City Manager Grogan, you can pick for who's going to answer those questions.
Sure. Vice Mayor Medina, at a high level, there was a lot there. But let me just say that when new development goes through the review process, we absolutely look at all of the municipal service requirements and factor those in. And there are mechanisms to ensure that development pays their fair share. As the city council and the community knows, we recently instituted development impact fees for this very reason, to ensure that new development pays for their fair share of all that requires city infrastructure. And so absolutely, we will cross our i's, dot our t's and do the homework and the analysis through the master plan and visiting process. So I think that's sort of the the best overall answer. There's a lot to get into, but we are articulating a high level vision and then through that master planning process, all of the components and the pieces that extend from that will be addressed.
Excellent. City Clerk Thurman, is there, are there any others in with hands up?
No, there are no other members of the public with their hand raised.
Okay. Action required, city manager?
Yeah, so the requested action is for the city council to direct the city manager to finalize and release the document. And so if there's a motion in a second, we will proceed following that action.
Thank you, and I see Councilman Hamilton's hand up.
Yeah, I'll make that motion to authorize the city manager to finalize and release the reimagining Tanforan land use fact sheet.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Acting Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mayor Rico Medina recused.
Okay, let's take a three minute recess as we get the real mayor back into the room and we'll, we'll see everybody shortly. Thank you.
Okay, we have 8:09, the three minutes that was for the break. And we're all back, so why don't we go ahead and reconvene the meeting of the San Bruno City Council and we will move on to item number seven, conduct of business. City Clerk?
Item 7A, wave first reading and introduce an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Bruno amending and re adopting Title VII, parentheses, vehicles and traffic, and parentheses, of the San Bruno Municipal Code.
City Attorney Mark Safrano, please.
Good evening, everyone, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Let me go ahead and share my screen. I've got a brief PowerPoint to walk us through the proposed amendments to this particular section, and I'll ask if everybody can see my screen. Excuse me?
I'm not seeing a shared screen yet. I don't see it. Maybe you're just testing us.
It did seem that way. One second. One moment. All right, we'll give it one more try. You know, as soon as the pandemic is over, I'll learn all the technology. All right, good evening. So we're here to talk about our quest to revise the municipal code. And I have a brief presentation for all of you this evening that summarizes the staff report. So our agenda for tonight is we'll go through a little background. We're going to discuss and ask to introduce the amendments to Title VII and talk about next steps. So here's the background, you've seen this before, we've gone through it for the prior six titles, but just as a reminder, because these don't come to you very often. So this project started back in October of 2018, where the city council directed me to comprehensively amend the municipal code, which consists of 11 titles and a zoning code. And that zoning code, as you may recall, is being separately updated in bits and pieces. And we'll talk a little bit about that tonight because there's always some crossover and we're trying to anticipate the sorts of changes that will be made in that zoning code when, when the time comes. But that is being handled by the community. An Economic Development Department primarily is the lead with my assistance. But so of those 11 titles, our primary focus is to update them for internal consistency and also for consistency with current law. And we've had a variety of policy discussions for those revisions. And so far, we've completed titles one through six. So tonight is Title VII. And so far, we've completed titles one through six. So tonight is Title VII. So Title VII consists of 15 chapters, and I'll just very briefly, uh, go through them and what we plan to do. So 7.04, there's some minor amendments. We do have some more substantive amendments to, uh, the, uh, TSPC. We'll talk about those separately. And similarly to the city traffic engineer, actually those amendments in those two sections are being made primarily for the same reason that we'll discuss. Uh, 7.16, stopping, standing and parking, we do have some amendments proposed. Uh, we don't have any major amendments to residential permit parking at this time. So, uh, moving to long-speed surveys, restricted street use and miscellaneous driving rules, we don't have any proposed amendments to at this time. 7.32, uh, just some minor non-substantive amendments. 7.36, we do have some substantive amendments, and we'll talk about where those came from and prior city council direction on those. And then the final list is we have some amendments to vehicles for hire, um, none to pedestrians, some amendments to bicycles and a minor amendment to skateboards. And that closes out with enforcement, and we're not proposing any, any amendments to those at this time. So let's dive in and talk about the TSPC. And really, there are two main things that we wanted to do with the amendments is first of all, to conform the, uh, statement of who's a member of the TSPC to current and, and best practices. Uh, the, the code is really obsolete in terms of it, it talks about staff members and other people being members of the committee, and they're not members of the committee. Um, so we've, we've just cleaned that up, and I think that's fairly, um, fairly clear. Uh, but more importantly, we tried to make only a few, I would say relatively minor tweaks, but to significantly mitigate the risk, um, of the duties that the TSPC embarks upon by really defining them a little bit more clearly. And I think the main change here that we're proposing is to make sure that, uh, whatever the TSPC recommends, and they can recommend anything they want, uh, but there is at least a, um, uh, there is staff information, expert engineering information that is provided as part of their recommendation. And the TSPC is of course free to make a different recommendation if they want to. But the way that the, the code was written, uh, it, it, it sort of had the recommendations going in, in the wrong direction, I guess I would say, from a risk management standpoint. Uh, so the experts should be recommending to the recommending body, TSPC. And, um, the, so we, we've just tried to make that clear. You might, you might ask yourselves, well, why is that? And the answer is explained, uh, sort of in, in detail in the staff report, which is, uh, the city can get what's called design immunity for accidents that occur as a result of traffic features or, uh, traffic signs or traffic markings. And that design immunity, uh, means that, that, uh, somebody who, uh, might be injured in, in an accident at the intersection can't blame the city for the accident if the design of the intersection was reasonable when it was approved. Well, how is the city going to prove that it was reasonable? And what the courts have said is the answer to that is by expert engineering testimony at the time that the design was approved. So that's the reason that whenever these things do come forward to you, the deciding authority of the city council, we always want to have a, a staff report that is supported by some expert engineering approval. Because, uh, that has come in very handy in prior cases where we have asserted design immunity and you can get design immunity. Uh, there are, on the other hand, cases in which, uh, cities do not have that expert opinion or do not clearly have that expert opinion backing up their design. And those cities have to litigate those cases. Uh, they, they go to trial or they get settled for, for a lot more money than if they had been able to get the community. So those are really the main changes to that particular, uh, chapter. And then, uh, going right along with that, we made a couple of changes, excuse me, to the city traffic engineer section. Uh, the, the one that we're having trouble recruiting, you, you, uh, heard perhaps earlier. And, uh, the important thing here is, uh, we, we did this with the collaboration of our outside council who helped us out in one of these cases. The idea is to make sure that the city traffic engineer has all of the authority that is legally necessary to recommend and implement those design decisions, subject to city council approval, of course. And so we wanted to make sure, we, we just added some, uh, verbiage in the city, uh, traffic engineer's description to make it consistent, those duties consistent with that individual's job description. And you'll see particularly at the end in subsection E, uh, where it's got a whole list of things that the city engineer can do. And those things are also in the, uh, in the job description. So those are the main changes to point oh eight and point one two. In 7.16, we only made a couple of minor changes. We, uh, at the suggestion of the police chief exempted, uh, curbing your wheels at rolled curves, uh, which was explained to me was ineffective at stopping the car from, from rolling down or, or up the hill. I, I didn't actually know that. Um, and then we also omitted, um, the blanket prohibition on for sale signs and vehicles. And this is a, a topic that does frequently come up where there's a car or maybe multiple cars parked on the street with for sale signs. So that's a little bit of a vexing problem to solve, but the place to solve that is in the city sign ordinance. And that is part of the zoning code. And, uh, when that comes up, I'll be recommending that the sign ordinance be split into two separate sections. One section that covers private property, in other words, what kind of sign can you have on your property? And another section that covers public property, uh, which is what kinds of signs can individuals put up on, on, uh, our streets and, and so on. And that's where, uh, this is going to be primarily addressed. So we'll, it, it, it sort of doesn't make sense to keep it here, but it does make sense to put it there. And we do have a note of it, and I've already worked with staff to identify those areas of the sign ordinance that we'll need to, to tackle when that comes up, hopefully in the near future, because that code is in, in desperate need of revision. So moving on to 7.36, this is an important section that we spent a lot of time on previously when we were talking about Title V. And you'll remember that Title V deals with nuisances. And when we went through that, we simultaneously looked at 7.36. And we told you that what we were going to do was, once you decided what you wanted in Title V, we would then make sure that the analogous sections in 7.36 were conformed to that. So let me just briefly go over that. So this relates to abandoned or inoperable vehicles. It does not relate to the, uh, parking of operable vehicles on city streets. So that's sort of a separate topic. These are abandoned or inoperable vehicles. So in Title V, when we were looking at that, what you told us, uh, to do, and though the code was amended accordingly, was, uh, you wanted us to prohibit parking these types of vehicles, abandoned or inoperable ones, unless they're fully enclosed and not visible. And so those changes were made to Title V. Uh, you also wanted to clarify the definition of an inoperable vehicle, and specifically that inoperable vehicles included vehicles that have a certificate of non-operation from the DMV. Just because the DMV says, uh, they're, they're not operable doesn't mean that they're registered and legal and, uh, don't meet this definition of an inoperable vehicle. So that change was also made in 7.36. You also told us that, uh, you wanted to prohibit storage of visible camper shelves for, uh, more than 72 hours. And so that, that change was made in Title V. And so the question is, what changes did we make in 7.36 to be consistent with that? So, um, when we were talking about Title V, the city council did have a fairly lengthy discussion and said that at that time, they wanted to continue allowing one operable trailer, camper, boater, RV were otherwise legally allowed. Again, this is on, um, uh, this is on private property, because that's what Title V addresses. So along those lines, we have recommended that this particular chapter, 7.36, be only applicable to private property and not to public property. And you might wonder, well, that seems counterintuitive. Why, why would that be? Well, the reason for that is because all of the procedures that are in Title VII, 7.36 in particular, that relate to the removal of vehicles, relate solely to removal of vehicles from private property. There are additional due process protections that the city is required to, um, impose when they are removing vehicles from private property. Whereas on the other hand, the vehicle code allows the city to tow vehicles from public property under a whole set of circumstances, a big laundry list of, of things. And under state law, there are different notice provisions. And those notice provisions under state law are the ones that the city has always followed. The city has never really used, uh, at least as I understand it, Title VII or chapter 7.36 to tow vehicles from public property. That is abandoned or inoperable vehicles from public property. So let me give you an example of that. Um, if you have a vehicle that is, for example, lacking current registration or for one reason or another cannot be operated on a public street, if that vehicle is parked on a public street, it can be towed from, uh, from public property without going through many of the due process requirements that apply only to private property. And so what was very confusing about this section was that it, it included the words "or public property" when it really should have just stuck to private property, and that's what we've done. So that's kind of a long explanation for what we've done to this section. But it was really a key thing that, that did come up in some litigation with the city. And we were able to, uh, successfully explain the reasons for why it was written the way it was written to the court. But we would have been much happier not having had to explain it in the first place. And, uh, this is an issue that can recur time and again. Uh, and so we want to make sure that it's cleaned up and taken care of in 7.36 when we're going through this. So we do have a couple of other, uh, chapters to quickly go through. So vehicles for hire, I'm actually doing something that was against my advice previously, which was if it's not broken, don't fix it, even if it's obsolete. Um, but this is sort of broken and obsolete, so I couldn't resist, uh, but to, to suggest that most of this section, uh, really be repealed. So the city does not regulate taxicabs. That's all this section talks about. Uh, we, we don't regulate them. I, I don't know that we've ever regulated them, except maybe in the distant past. Uh, and there's really no reason to impose an obligation on staff that they're, uh, either not doing now and really not capable of doing for a variety of reasons. And importantly, ride-sharing services like Uber and Lyft are not taxicabs and are not regulated under this section. They don't fall into the definition of a taxicab. They are separately regulated by the CPUC, as I think many of you know. One interesting tidbit here is that the city could, if it wanted to, require drivers who are domiciled in the city to obtain a business license. But right now, we don't, uh, we don't require Uber and Lyft drivers who live in the city to get a business license. Um, if you want to do that, then I would propose amending Title III when we go back to our cleanups. We, we're, we're keeping a list, and, uh, this would be one thing that we might wish to do. Uh, you, we, we cannot require all Uber and Lyft drivers, regardless of domicile, to obtain a business license. We can only require those that are domiciled in the city to do that. So that's something I think to, to put off to a later date, but when we're done with all the, the titles, we'll come back for a, a full cleanup of all of them, of these sort of straggler things that we've come up with over the last couple of years. Bicycles, um, another obsolete section that we propose to repeal. Uh, this, uh, says that the fire department licenses all bicycles. Well, they don't. I don't know that they ever have. Uh, they certainly don't want to, and it certainly seems like a bad idea to do that. Um, but we do want to retain the definitions, which includes motorized bicycles, because, uh, we do, I believe, want to retain the prohibition against riding on sidewalks. That's a very common, uh, safety ordinance that, that many cities have. And we're not proposing to eliminate that i- as part of the repeal. One question that's come up on this is, well, what about those bicycle rental companies that leave their bicycles all over the place? Uh, and, you know, the city had a, a brief, um, unfortunate experience, I think, with, with Limebike some years ago, maybe four years ago. And they sort of came and went very quickly once we told them that their business was not permitted and they were encroaching in the right of way. Uh, some of those entities have approached cities in the past, not our city, but other cities, and said, we'd like to enter into agreement with you. We'd like to do this or that. We'd like to, uh, work on some sort of regulatory structure. And we haven't been approached, and we can certainly amend these regulations if and when that occurs. But it's probably premature to do it now because it's solving a problem that we don't, we don't have yet, and we don't know what form it's going to, uh, take at this time. So we're not recommending any other changes to 7.40. So finally, um, next steps is to review the proposed amendments, introduce the ordinance. If you don't have any questions or wish to make any changes, if you do, let's talk about them. Uh, we would have to reintroduce if there are sort of major substantive changes you want to make. But if just minor ones, we can probably go ahead and introduce it at this meeting, um, and as opposed to a subsequent meeting. And then otherwise, on that schedule, adoption would be scheduled for the 24th of August. And then finally, uh, just want to give you a heads up. Title X is going to be scheduled out of order, that is, out of numerical order, for that same meeting. And the reason for that is the county is requesting that the city adopt their model ordinance relating to food waste packaging or food packaging. And so a bunch of cities on the peninsula are doing that. A staff has already written, um, really most of that staff report and that ordinance, the county's ordinance. Um, and so we think it'll be ready to come at that meeting. And there are actually not very many other changes that we're proposing to that title. So we thought, why not get it out of the way? And then, uh, if that's done, then we'll only have three more titles to do eight, nine and 11, um, before we go back for the cleanup. So that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Attorney. Um, my colleagues, if you have questions, if you could raise your hand and if there's anyone from the public, uh, please go ahead and raise your hand at this time as well. Uh, first we'll go to Councilmember Hamilton, please.
Uh, I don't have any questions. I just have a couple of comments. I actually did have a small list of questions. Um, but I anticipated that the city attorney would be answering them as we went, and you answered every single one of them. So thank you for that.
I just. Clairvoyance was one of my, um, one of my qualities.
You did well with it. Thank you. Uh, I, I, I just, I had to make the comment that I actually did have a bicycle license that was provided to me from the fire department in 1970. Um, back when, I barely remember it, but I do remember that it was a thing, but I agree that it isn't a thing anymore.
Well, Councilmember Hamilton, you know, I'm sure the fire department would support, uh, any motion you might make to involve them in issuing bicycle licenses to every child under the age of 12 in the city.
All right, thank you. You're right.
Councilmember Mason?
Thank you, um, for bringing back that we've, we met with some, with our suggestions. I did have a, a couple more. Um, so we can, um, can we, I guess we'll just go through, through them?
Yeah, of course.
So, um, the first one is, uh, page four or 132 of 182 in the packet. Um, and it's the, it's one of the first comments, 7.08040 duties. And it just, I think, changing the language to provide a forum for discussion seems, at least to me, to kind of, uh, water down the, uh, the ability of the committee to do more. And so what I wanted to suggest is to maybe say to provide a forum for discussion and provide recommendations prior to finalizing traffic studies and reports. Um, because that would still allow the committee to, to have, um, a meaningful contribution. Um, that would be the first one. And then the second one is, uh, section 7.08.040D. That's, uh, page four or 132 in the packet. Um, and I, I really don't know, so this is really a question, and we have some former committee members here. But, um, should we also broaden it to recommendations, not just to the city council, but maybe to the planning commission or even park and rec, given, um, that, you know, we've got the rack being built. Um, that's gonna be a busy, very busy street at some point. And then the planning commission, with all these projects coming, would it make sense to broaden it? It doesn't mean that that's gonna be the process, but just to allow for that possibility of the committee making recommendations to either commission or the full city council. Um, so that's, that's a suggestion. Um, the third one is section, um, 7.08 or, uh, .040 duties. Um, and this is, uh, page four to five or 132 to 133. And I didn't know if that last, um, section eight kind of catch-all includes speed bumps. Um, but I guess I just. But I guess I just don't know where speed bumps would fall into, whether it falls into a whole different section at some point that we're going to talk about. And if it doesn't, if we would add it here, because that's been a very popular topic, I would say, definitely with me and certain streets. The next one. Oh, I just had a question, and this one, I think, Marky can probably answer today, is that page 138 around speed limits, Section 7.12.110. There was an addition to say that the city traffic engineer, and then it added "in conjunction with the police department." And I don't have a problem with the addition. I just wanted, the question really is more from a practical perspective. Does that cause any administrative slowdown or just because I know the police department is also at capacity? So that was my only question there. And then, should I stop or?
I can address or at least make some comments about all of those, if you don't mind.
Yeah, yeah.
And then get Councilmember comments on those. So just on the very last one, I can explain, we amended that in collaboration with the police department and at their suggestion, because that's actually the process that occurs now. So they worked collaboratively with the public works department to do those speed surveys. So that was the reason for that.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm happy to answer the other questions or at least provide a little bit of information about them. So if we're going backwards about the speed bumps, so I'll defer maybe to the public works department, but traffic control does include speed bumps, I believe. There's, it's a broad, certainly a broad enough category to include any sort of traffic control device, and those are covered in the manual for uniform traffic control devices that I think we talked about. And I see that our city public works interim public works director is on the line. Was I right about that, or do I need to go get an engineering degree?
Well, I might need to go get a traffic engineering degree. I believe, you know, I'm a bit hesitant to misspeak as well, so I may need to ask our traffic engineer. But our traffic calming program does include speed bumps. And I'm unclear whether it's in the California Municipal, the MUTCD Uniform Transportation Guide. So that is something I may need to follow up on.
I just wanted to make the suggestion, since we're making these changes now, if it's the right place, if it's not the right place, then that's, I understand that.
My thought would be, we can check with the traffic engineer, and if it's covered, to not put it in, because then somebody would wonder, well, why didn't you put the other 27 things in that, you know, are also covered? But if for some reason it's not, we can consider that for the next, for the adoption. And then, do you mind going back briefly to the TSBC duties? I do have just a couple of brief comments about that, least recommendations. So the suggestion to make recommendations to other boards and commissions that are not deciding bodies, I guess I would offhand recommend against that, I think for a couple of reasons. I think it's important to have the shortest path of decision-making, then I'm sort of talking from a risk perspective. If you have these sorts of decisions going through multiple bodies in the city, then I think you set up a situation in which the members, the volunteer, laypeople, members of those bodies are subject to being deposed and subject to being asked, well, why did you do this? And what about this? And what about that? It just really muddies the record tremendously. It's much clearer to have a recommending body like the TSBC that has expert staff and consultants making a recommendation to the city council, because ultimately, the city council is the one that needs to make that decision and that decides. Now, there's nothing stopping the staff, for example, to provide information to the other bodies about the recommendations of the TSBC, and I think they often do that when it's appropriate. So that would be my thought about that one. As for the first one, I actually liked your suggestion, and I would only reword it very slightly to say to provide a forum for discussion and provide recommendations regarding traffic studies and reports. And maybe that was what you said, but you might have had another word in there. But I think that's perfectly fine, and I don't think creates a risk mitigation situation or does anything that, you know, is against the purpose of what we're trying to accomplish here, so.
Yeah, I think the only, what I had said was that would provide the recommendation prior to finalizing. So that would, that would make sure that we got the committee's voice in before there was anything final going to the commission or the council, which I still think, I still feel like we should say that, because it would require the committee to look through, and this is the committee that the council has determined, you know, should be providing recommendations on this, these exact kinds of studies and reports.
I'll defer to the city council on that. I think that's a policy decision about whether you want the TSBC to be making recommendations before any traffic studies are done about anything. I think the language before, I think, was maybe concerning, which is why I recommended what I did, but I think it's a policy decision for the city council or to defer that to a later time.
Through the mayor, can I make a comment?
Okay, hold on. I believe, Mark, you answered the councilmember's questions. Was there additional questions, Councilmember Mason? Did you want to keep going, or Tom? I'm sorry, Councilmember Hamilton?
It was on that, it was on that exact topic. I mean, I just wanted to say, as a
If you don't mind.
Member of the TSBC, we didn't, you know, obviously, we did not pre-approve and pre-direct all traffic studies. However, you know, usually, we would see the results of a traffic study as the first time that would be, there would be an item. But there had been, there had been times when we felt that the traffic study was not comprehensive enough, you know, missed an area or whatever, and directed staff to expand it and bring it back again, and that was, and that was always done. So that's part of what happens, as part of the, as part of the process today. I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. And Councilmember Mason, could you, could we go through the rest of your questions? And then we'll go back to the city attorney.
Yep, no problem. Yeah, and I just wanted to also be clear that the, my comment about adding the planning commission, recreation, Parks and Rec, wasn't to say that they must go through that chain, but just to allow that option there, should there be that opportunity to, you know, come before the committee. The other ones were, let's see. Okay. So you answered this question. The next one is on Section 7.16.150. This is the section around parking in excess of the time limit prohibited, and it's page 16 of, you know, that particular report or page 144. And I'm just wondering, should we be clear about the consequences of staying longer than the curb markings? You know, are these towed, and when are they towed, and how, you know, what's that, what's that process look like? And then I just have three more, so I'll go ahead and finish. And then Chapter 7.18, this is the residential permit parking. And I don't think this one's going to be answered tonight. I just wanted to throw out a suggestion around this, which is really to reflect on whether we are having anybody using this residential parking permit program. And understanding that this is not agendized tonight, but a suggestion might be an ad hoc committee to determine whether this is, has really been effective and whether it's the best solution to what we're trying, what are we trying to resolve? And has this been a solution that has worked so far? And then the next one is at 7.20.020, the decrease of maximum speed limits. I would suggest, and this is page 25 or 153, I would suggest adding Cunningham Way on there, right off the freeway. I don't, I don't know how these streets have all been designated, who studied them, but people get off the freeway and just, or get on the freeway and just speed down that street. It's really dangerous. The next one is Section 7.24.050, and this is page 28 or 156. And this is the regular parking of other large vehicles. And same question as before, what is the enforcement method? And should we, should we have that in, you know, in that particular section? And I believe that is it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. City Attorney, are you able to take on those, please?
Sure, actually, I think Chief, the police chief would probably be the best person to answer the two enforcement questions that Councilmember Mason raised. So maybe if he's available, he could pop on.
Maybe we can bring him in while you answer the others?
All right. Oh, and he might also be able to have an answer to, why don't we include Cunningham on the list? I think that those are going to require a speed survey to include them. And so I don't think we can include them now, because there's not a speed survey. But if there were one, then that would be amended. I can let him answer that, and I see that he's popping on right now.
Chief Johansson, I don't know if it would be helpful to have the questions reposed, or are you okay?
Yeah, it would be helpful to just hear the exact enforcement questions that you want me to address.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, no problem. So it's, I guess it's actually a different question. It's in the areas where we're placing certain restrictions, should we be clear on what that enforcement mechanism is within the ordinance?
Yes, I'll start out.
I think that's more for City Attorney.
Yeah, so no, I understand the question now. So I think, I think the answer is probably not. You know, these are all enforceable through a variety of means. The fines differ. There's a fine schedule that's adopted periodically, and I generally recommend not putting that in the ordinance, because then otherwise, every time the penalty or the enforcement mechanism changes, you've got to remember to go back and amend the ordinance. So that would be my recommendation, and, you know, the chief might have some additional thoughts about that.
No, my position would be the same. I think that it's probably not, at least in my own opinion-wise, to include enforcement language, especially procedural-type language about how enforcement occurs within the ordinance itself, because it changes from time to time based not only upon the law, but based upon department capabilities and needs.
So then how do we, how do we know, so for example, this Section 7.16.150, the parking in excess of time limits? How do, how do we know that the enforcement mechanism is being applied, I guess, throughout? So for example, how do we know that in one area cars may get towed, in another area they may not get towed? Or does it just have to do with capacity and they're all the same? Does it have to do with the day, if it's a holiday versus not a holiday? Because this is a, I think this is a pretty common complaint, is around people who stay past the timeframe that they're supposed to be parked in any given space.
Yeah, I'm not completely sure that I understand the question. I think if the question is to, is what mechanism exists to determine what enforcement is actually being conducted, that, to me, would be more of a data and records request through the police department. If the question, however, is more pertaining to whether or not this code should stipulate exactly where enforcement should or should not occur, I would defer to the city attorney and to council for that. I think that that's a different question than if we're looking for, hey, where is it actually occurring versus where should it be legally permitted to occur?
I think it's, and I don't mean to be confusing, but I think it's, so for example, I'll just give an example. So if someone stays in a, in a space that's designated no more than 72 hours, and they've now been there, I don't know, 85 hours, right? What is the enforcement mechanism? And how does somebody know who's the owner of the car that their car might be towed? And I know, and I know in some locations, not just in San Bruno, but, you know, officers will go kind of above and beyond, knock on doors, is this your car? We don't want to tow it. Tows are very expensive. You know, how do you know that that's not going to happen? If I, if it's my car that's outside, should I expect a knock on the door before someone tow's the car? Or is it going to be a standard that a car will be towed if it's exceeded the, you know, the timeframe?
Well, also, and then I'll turn it over, obviously, to the professional, which is the chief and the city attorney. But I believe, you know, if it's a critical situation and somebody's blocking a driveway and there's a medical emergency, it may have to get towed. I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's, hold on, yeah. If it is, you know, like, let's run the plate, you know, they have the time, they run the plate, and they go, it's Rico, and he lives over here. And they knock on the door, that's a gracious customer service, a nice thing, and I have heard that folks have done that. But I think it's very situational, and I think what I'm hearing, and then we'll go to the chief, is you're kind of wanting it quantified verbatim, which then kind of doesn't, because every scenario is a little different. It's got, I guess what I'm trying to say, my long way of saying it. But anyway, chief.
And I think, again, just to be clear, not the emergency situation, I would hope the city would take that risk and say, we've got to tow the car if someone's life is in danger. I think it's more the common question. We've got all these people who are taking a flight out, and they're parking in front of my house, and they're surpassing the timeframe. We've got people staying at Airbnbs that are renting a house nearby, they are not moving their car. I mean, those are more common and more typical. And so when I hear the frustrations, it's, you want to go look at the ordinance and say, well, the ordinance says it's, you know, 72 hours. And so what happens after 72 hours? And so I think it's, like, can, what is the clarity given to the public and to staff to say this is, and to the police department, too, to say this is what we need to be able to do our jobs? How can we help with that, with that, I guess, that process?
Yeah, and now, now I understand what you're trying to say. You're talking about a 72-hour, people that are not happy with folks that are parked within their neighborhood streets and taking up parking, whether they're a SFO or whether, whatever they're doing. And I know there's procedure to that and process, and maybe Chief and our attorney can chime in at this point. Thanks for, that helps clear up what you were trying to go to.
Yeah, I think that, for what it's worth, I better understand the question now. And really, it's quite specific, actually, to the 72-hour ordinance, because other time parking ordinances are very different in nature. When you talk about a five-hour parking lot, for example, or a two-hour spot downtown, those are very different in terms of the enforcement posture and the procedure than the 72-hour violations. So the 72-hour violation, I can just tell you, in practice, is only enforced at this point in time on a complaint basis. That is largely, A, because that's how most cities do it, that the spirit of the 72-hour ordinance is to avoid abandoning vehicles in neighborhoods and to give the police department, the chief, to remove those vehicles in order to keep from the blight in the community. And so we respond to them on a complaint basis. There is a fairly definitive procedure for that in terms of what we do each time that happens, because we can't just take a resident's word for it that a vehicle's been there for 72 hours. Once they tell us it's been there 72 hours, we then by law have to complete some procedural steps to ensure that it has, in fact, been there for 72 hours before we can complete a tow and that it doesn't move at least a tenth of a mile during that timeframe. So what that posture looks like does change from time to time in terms of our responsiveness based upon resources. As an example, when fully staffed, we're pretty quick to respond to those abandoned vehicle or 72-hour ordinance complaints. We chalk the tires, we issue a warning notice, we come back and check on it periodically to ensure that it goes at least 72 hours from then, and then we'll come back out and ticket and or tow the vehicle depending upon the circumstances. Now, as far as knocking on doors, that is our typical procedure, not because it's required by statute, but because that's the kind of police department we are, if the vehicle comes back registered to a local resident. Because again, the spirit of this ordinance being there to avoid abandoned vehicles, oftentimes, these vehicles are called in simply because a resident doesn't like that a neighbor has parked in front of their house instead of in front of their own home. And so rather than engage in the time requirements, you know, that exist in order to go and mark the tires and issue the warning notice and enter it into the computer system and go back out and check it, we will often knock on that resident's door, say, hey, you know, we've got some complaints about your vehicle not moving in 72 hours. Can you please make sure that you do so? And in most cases, they agree to do so immediately, and that circumvents the need to continue any further in that process. Again, my position would be that there is nowhere, to my knowledge, anywhere in penal code, vehicle code, health and safety code, or typically even in a municipal code, that would spell out in that kind of detail the procedural process for conducting enforcement. And I think that there is plenty of good reason for that. And I think that there is plenty of good reason for that, most of which is probably better spoken to by the City Attorney than me.
Right, I would agree with that. I think that those procedures are often dependent, as the Chief indicated, on resources, on priorities. Those priorities can change. It's just not a good idea to either hamstring the Police Department and require them to do things that now a different City Council might wish that they not do, or vice versa. So the enforcement of these ordinances is left to the policymaking decisions of the City Council based on resources and the discretion of the Police Department. And if you, the City Council, would like to direct something different, then you're certainly free to do that. But I generally don't recommend that that be spelled out in the ordinance. And it's not really anywhere spelled out in any of our ordinances for that reason.
Yeah, so I guess what I would respond to that, thank you, that was helpful, would be that, you know, we're in the policy process right now, and this is a very common complaint. So if there is a recommendation by the Police Department who's providing the citations to the Council to make adjustments or tweaks, then I would definitely, you know, recommend that the Council take a look at those. Because, you know, if there's anything that we can do to mitigate this problem by assisting you with policy, then that's really our place, and that's where I think we can help the most. So again, this is a common complaint, and if there's clearer policy that can be provided, then I think we'd be obliged to take a look at your recommendations, Chief.
City Attorney, and Chief, I'm sorry, City Chief and City Attorney. My understanding, and please for Council and for myself, when you are looking at these titles, and sometimes you have to go with the pace of other departments because they're interwoven into the actions, i.e. Title VII. Is not, do not meet with other department heads, or in this case, the Police Chief, in regards to reviewing thoughts, ideas, cleanup, language, et cetera?
Yes, Chief can attest to the fact that we spent a great deal of time that probably he didn't want us to spend talking about this. But I guess I would say, to the point about, you know, this is the time to talk about policy. I would actually say that if there is going to be a policy discussion about enforcement of ordinances, that that's actually not a discussion about the ordinance, it's a discussion about enforcement. And I think that's really, as I think Councilmember Mason, you indicated, might be best left for a different time, because the ordinance itself doesn't specify, you know, how, exactly how it's enforced for reasons that we discussed. So if the Council does want to give that policy direction, I would say, great, but not in the ordinance. That can be done separately by resolution.
So I just, I'm sorry, I just want to be clear, though. Is there a section, another section, that deals directly with enforcement?
Not other than a general section that says it's enforceable, is provided by the code and by state law.
Okay, so when I asked, because when I read it, I didn't see another section. And as the Policy Board, we obviously can give direction to create a section. And really, what I'm asking for is if we did want to think outside the box and try to identify a way to mitigate the complaints that we're getting by just kind of thinking differently about this. Is there something more that we can do within the policy, within the ordinance, within our powers that can mitigate that? And I appreciate that, you know, departments meet. My experience oftentimes is that when, after the fact, when the recommendation is coming to a board, there might be different perspectives out there that have not been considered. So I just wanted to bring those to the attention of the Council and to Vice City Attorney. Thank you.
I have the, I see that City Manager has had his hand up, and then we'll go to the Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The City Attorney said mostly what I was going to say, but I just want to clarify. If we're talking about enforcement of the 72-hour rule, I would actually say that that's not policy. It's actually more operations, and the solutions to that could be many, right? One could be an operational discussion and a funding discussion about not having police officers respond to those calls, but instead of setting up a proactive 72-hour enforcement division, where you may have CSOs that have vehicles with license plate readers that drive around the city, snapping license plates with technology that can tell if a vehicle moves. And so it's actually, the policy is clear, and the enforcement tools are there. Well, I think this discussion would really be about is if there's a desire to have a different operational model about how the 72-hour rule is enforced, what is that, what does that cost, what level of positions? And it doesn't have to be an officer, and we know that we're under resourced on officers, and our officers, either now or if we had a few more, would be responding to radio calls. And that would always take more priority than doing the proactive 72-hour enforcement. So I just wanted to highlight that, that it's actually, I think, not a policy conversation, but more of an operational and budgetary conversation.
Okay, thank you, and we'll go to the Vice Mayor, and any comments or questions you have, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to chime in a little bit on this particular matter of the 72 hours. And Councilwoman Mason did bring up, which would be for another time, the Residential Parking Permit Program. It's probably time for some discussion and review of that, being also, things calmed down quite a bit when COVID was going on, but traffic's increasing, and airports are running, and yes, I received additional complaints about parking, airport parkers and so forth. But I think we have to figure out how to do that with the City Manager and the knowledge that we are extremely busy, and this wasn't a strategic initiative. How do we work around that, right? So perhaps we can ask for an ad hoc committee at a later time, being that this business here is to proceed and get these revisions done. I'm in favor of that. My new question, and the City Attorney did mention, if the YouTube drivers, we can require them to get a business license if they reside in our city, then why wouldn't we do that? And if we got 50% compliance, then that was 50% of the revenue. We're not going to actively target people that don't get business licenses. At least I don't think we would. So that's my question for the City Attorney. If we can legally require it, then why wouldn't we?
And that is certainly a policy decision you can make. I'm only suggesting that it be made when we come back and do the cleanup of Title III, because that deals with business licenses. There were a couple of other suggestions about that title as well that we'd want to tackle at the same time.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, nothing else, thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Hamilton for your questions and comments, please.
So just a couple of quick comments on the 72-hour thing. We asked this question a lot throughout my whole time on the TSPC, and then again, when we were on the Residential Parking Permit Subcommittee. Because as Councilmember Mason said, it is a very, very common complaint that people make, that folks are leaving their cars inappropriately in the neighborhood. And I agree that the scenario that the Chief went through, where it's turned out to be your neighbor's car, and you know, people are getting mad that they're not in front of the right house or whatever. Putting that to one side, the typical use case of someone, you know, leaving their car and going to the airport, because even if they get a ticket, it's still going to be cheaper than paying airport parking. That still exists. And we asked the City Attorney, I believe, more than one occasion, if there's any way to change the ordinances. But I think, and the City Attorney can confirm, I think we're kind of hamstrung by state law. And for a practical standpoint, the 72-hour rule, the way that it gets enforced, and again, we're following the law, and that's why it gets enforced this way, is that I look out my window, I see a car sitting there that's been there for three days. I call, they come and chalk it, they wait three more days, and then it'll get a ticket. So it's there for six, or up to six. But it's unfortunate, but I don't know what we can do to get around it. If there was a recommendation that we could make to the ordinance to give the police more teeth to be able to enforce those types of things, I'd be all for it. And I would echo Councilmember Mason's suggestion that we think out of the box if possible. I understand if we're completely hamstrung, but it was something that I think we should keep our minds open to, because it is a big problem.
If I may, Councilmember Hamilton?
City Attorney, please.
Sure, so I do agree with the City Manager's assessment that that is really an operational decision. And I used the word, I think, "policy" in error when I was talking about it. It's a, the policy decision is how many resources do you want to allocate to it? The only other thing I would add is, I think, as I've indicated before in memos and other open sessions, the 72-hour, you know, to tow the car for a 72-hour violation is currently high on the list of both the Legislature and the courts for one of those restrictions that cities should not be aggressively enforcing. You know, we've talked about this extensively before. Unfortunately, this is not, you know, the Legislature is busy trying to find ways to stop cities from enforcing this, because they believe that towing these vehicles represents a forfeiture to people of fewer economic means, that it's extremely expensive to get your car out of the tow yard, you lose your car for days, if not weeks. People can't go to work, they can't go to the doctors. Anyway, there's a whole host of reasons that make it very challenging to even provide those additional tools beyond the sorts of operational decisions to say, let's just make sure that we're catching more of the violators in the way that we catch them now, as opposed to coming up with some different, totally different mechanism to enforce a law which both the courts and the Legislature are saying, really, cities should not be aggressively enforcing for all those reasons. That's the dilemma.
Thank you, and then we'll go to Councilmember Salazar for your questions and comments, please.
Thank you. So, yeah, a couple of, we've been talking about a lot of different things, and I think we heard both from the City Manager and from the City Attorney that any discussions on enforcement are strictly operational issues, and those are clearly not our purview. And I do believe that this review has shown that, you know, there are areas that needed adjustment, the 72-hour rule, I do believe, as Councilmember Hamilton alluded to, pretty much bumps up against the limits that we have that are set by the state. And we definitely, while I agree it is a problem, and it is something I hear about a lot, it's not something that we want to try to legislate and also directing the Police Department on how to enforce. Or I think that would be also a dangerous position for us to try to take at this time. And within all that, also, you know, we alluded to what's happened with the Residential Parking Permit Program. And that really was intended to be the solution to getting us passed just the 72-hour rule and having people call in. And neighborhoods that were severely impacted would have that tool available to them. You know, currently, I'm working two days a week in the office, and the rest of the days I'm at home. My car sits in front of my house four days a week. And I certainly wouldn't want anyone coming around and scanning my license plate and then giving me a ticket because another car's sitting there. And I don't think anyone in the city would really appreciate that. So to create a worse problem for our residents, to try to alleviate another one, I don't think is the right approach. I do agree with Councilmember Mason that the Residential Parking Permit Program should be revisited. I made the suggestion prior when we were talking about strategic initiatives. And at that time, I recommended that maybe it would be a project that we could send back to TSPC and have them look into that and take somewhat of a lead in doing that project and sort of not put so much onus on staff, but take it on as a project that the committee members could do. And in looking at the changes that we're proposing now, I think that there was some tightening down of, you know, what the roles and responsibilities are. It doesn't look like we're really allowing any latitude for the Council to assign projects to that committee. So that's something that, if there's an opportunity for us to create that opportunity for us to give the committee members interesting work to do, I think it may resolve some of the concern that I've heard from committee members in terms of they feel that it's too prescribed, and they don't feel that their talents are being fully utilized. So I believe that that would be one way to make their assignment perhaps a little more fruitful or rewarding. But at the same time, I do agree that we do have to be very careful in what we do allow them to do, because if they were to just make recommendations willy-nilly, and those would go to the Council without ever being reviewed by staff or being vetted, that they somehow concur with state law or our own ordinances, that that would probably not be the best outcome. So in summary, I know I kind of went around in circles there. But yeah, I don't think that we need to tweak anything around the 72-hour rule. I believe that it is about as far as we can go in terms of what we're prescribing in an ordinance. But I do believe that the Residential Parking Permit could be a potential solution to that, that we need to reinvestigate. And depending on where it falls on the priority list, I don't know if it's something that we will have to bring back as a strategic initiative. But I think that that has a potential of being a real solution to this problem we have with cars that are loitering in impacted neighborhoods.
City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Salazar's comment and suggestion that we potentially envelop this as a project for the TSPC to look at. We have talked about through strategic initiatives under the strong governance item, that one of the committees that we would look at sort of redefining and taking a more holistic look at the work they do is TSPC. And certainly, this is an effort and a conversation that fits in line with the core goals of TSPC. They would need to really be aligned with staff, and right now, we have a contract, a traffic engineer that would be supporting that effort, because there is a fair bit of research and analysis that needs to be done. So absolutely, I think we can look at that when we talk about strategic initiatives. But I also wanted to just make a sort of balcony-level comment, because my mind is a little foggy. Almost two years ago, when we talked about the Residential Parking Program, but I'm reminded that staff did recommend and say that that program is likely not the solution to our parking challenges. And even if it was a mandatory residential parking program, the core issue is that in some parts of our community, it's densely populated, the car ownership rate is high, and even if we limited it to one vehicle per, one street parking permit per unit, there would still be too many cars on a per-block basis. And so this conversation about 72-hour rule enforcement, as well as the Residential Parking Program, really ties back to that core issue, which is the vehicle ownership rates in parts of our community are higher than what the streets and the private off-street parking can handle. And that's a sort of larger envelope conversation. And while the Residential Parking Permit was lifted up as one tool, it was the recommendation of the traffic engineer and the staff at that time that that would likely not be the solution, and there may be a challenge with residents raising their hand to elect to be into that system, given the restrictions that it would place on them for parking on the street. And so I do think that this is sort of a classic issue that cities like ours deal with. And, you know, some of the most successful are San Francisco, that put so many restrictions on owning a car, that people stopped owning as many cars as they do. But it's not an easy problem to solve, and absolutely, sort of enveloping it as a larger project that does have staff or contract, like, traffic engineer staff tied to it is a way. is a way to address it.
Councilmember Salazar, I see your, your hand is up, sir?
My hand is back up. Thank you, sir. And, and so I just wanted to, to add on that I, I agree that it's not a silver bullet and it's not going to solve every problem. But the majority of the complaints I hear that pertain to having cars towed or removed after seventy-two hours is generally related to either rideshare or, or people that are going on trips and leaving their cars in the neighborhood. And I believe that a parking permit program would address that. It's not going to, it's not going to fix neighborhoods where your neighbor owns six cars and he likes to park them on the street. That, that's definitely not going to change with the, with the permit program, especially if we allow them to, to buy that many permits. It wouldn't address it. But I do believe that there are situations where if, if we know that there are several residents that are complaining or receiving habitual towing or habitual extended parking in areas where the complaints are coming in, that there could be a coordinated outreach effort to those neighborhoods to inform them of the process. And then also, you know, re-looking at that process so that it's not so onerous for people to, to implement it. I mean, it, it could have a benefit. If we're wasting a lot of our staff time in, you know, the, the police department going out there to tow vehicles, there, there's a benefit to us having a program where, you know, we, we can get rid of a lot of those. And a lot of times, a posted sign is enough to keep people out of it. And when we do have to tow, then it, it's not going to require seventy-two hours like, like it does now. So I, I do think there's, there's potential there and we shouldn't just cast it aside so quickly.
Yeah, I'm about to call on Councilmember Mason, but there was, the max speed limit on Cunningham was asked and, and to my knowledge, was not responded to thus far.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think I might have indicated on that, that there would have to be a speed survey done before the ordinance can be amended to include it?
Okay. Thank you. I just didn't catch that. I apologize. Councilmember Mason?
Thank everyone for the discussion. It is, I did want to say, I, the idea of giving committees just more leeway in bringing up topics, I, I thought we were going to discuss, and correct me if I'm wrong, is part of the strong governance, because I know it's come up a couple of times, just with committees across the board. And I think I just wanted to respond to City Attorney Zepfrohno's comment about the, the conversation right now with courts around ensuring that marginalized populations are not being adversely impacted. That is very, very true. And I think that my concern here is that anecdotally, when you drive around the city, it's our marginalized populations who are not able to park in front of their homes. And it's because of people that are parking, going to the airport, afford, being able to afford to take trips, or maybe they have whatever reason they're at the airport, or working at the airport. So I think that in our case, it's the opposite, where we have, you know, apartment buildings where people cannot find parkings. I remember campaigning, you would go to a house and there were like ten pairs of shoes outside of a one-bedroom apartment. And, you know, probably that's more than one car in, in that apartment. So I, I just want to be clear that I think here, the reason I am being more persistent about this is because I do believe it's in our more marginalized population areas that this is impacting households who cannot park to go home after probably a hard day of work, because people are parking there to go to the airport. And so how do we get past this? I will refer to Seattle. Seattle does have a seventy-two hour ordinance around parking. They clearly identify that that, that the seventy-two hours can change at any time to twenty-four hours. They identify that if you're going to park and you're in an, in this area, you might want to leave your keys with somebody in the neighborhood in case your car has to be moved. So as far as the step-by-step enforcement, that I would agree is a standard operating procedure. But whether we can be more clear around what that seventy-two hours means and how we can make sure that we really provide the chief and the police department with the resources they need to enforce whatever stronger seventy-two hour ordinance we can create, that's really where I want to be more persistent and more vocal. Because we, we do clearly have a problem in the areas where we're seeing a lot of cars. You're also going to see this new biotech hub on the east side that's on the border of South City and San Bruno. They are building half of the parking that they're expecting for the amount of employees that are going to come in, and I believe that's eleven thousand a day. So absent all of those employees taking BART or Caltrain, we're going to have a more impacted parking situation, in particular on the east side. So I just want to really encourage all of us to look at whether we can strengthen our ordinance and whether we, we really want to see some more language around enforcement. Thank you, everyone.
And, and for me, I think it was made clear at this point that this is a, a policy-type situation or a resource. And I don't, I, as long as I've known him, the police chief has never been a very shy person to, you know, if, if, if council wants to give direction and, and make policy at another appropriate time, I'm sure the chief would be more than happy to let, let it be known of the resources that it would adequately ta-take. Because if you set an expectation, you need to be able to meet it. Sometimes meeting those are, are not, not easy and, and not cheap. And also, as far as at another time, again, with the residential permit ad hoc or just review it, it is fine, but what you do find, and I've seen it, lots of neighbors hate it over Bay Shore Circle. When I was at the park having a group meeting, one wanted it and one didn't want it. And it was based because of the number of cars. If you only could have one or two permits, that wasn't okay. They pay taxes. So, but then in essence, you, you have your challenges, was indicated, where now some homes have four or five cars. And where do they park? I do remind that we do have homes in this community, I have one near me, that has no driveway, has no garage. There are homes in, that have been built, or they were built at a time, but I don't think they thought about putting a car in the garage. And so, you know, I, I think we need to be sensitive to that. But at the same time, too, those are for another discussion at another time. And hopefully, I did, I don't want to repeat everything that everyone has said to, to move it on. But what I do, whatever I did do, I've gotten Chief Johansson's, I see his hand is up. So I want to, I call on the chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I wanted to support the comments that the city attorney made about the, the ordinance. I can appreciate the desire to support the police department in better delivering on expectations of the communities that are impacted by parking down there. I think that what maybe didn't get said as succinctly as it needs to be said is that it, the, the, the courts are moving in the opposite direction of strengthening tow ordinances and the authority to tow than the direction we're discussing here. And, and I fear that if council decides they'd like to take steps to give us more authority to tow vehicles, that really the courts are moving in the complete opposite direction of that. And I don't, not only do I not think that it would be particularly wise, in my opinion, to strengthen the seventy-two hour ordinance or to somehow make it easier for us to tow vehicles, but I think that in fact, watching very closely as legislation is pushing in the opposite direction and moving towards really towing very, very few vehicles unless they qualify under the community caretaking doctrine.
Thank you, Chief. And, and this has been told to the council before, that we know there's been legislation in Sacramento in regards to that. So, and, and, and I, it is in my belief, and I could be corrected, is that if there were items within Title VII that the police department or the chief or his man team felt that needed to be modified and/or added, would have been brought forward to Mr. Zaffarano, and we would, we would be knowing that right here, right now. With that said, we do have, it is a conduct of business. It is, we've had a lot of conversation, but it would, it's the waiving of the reading and introducing an ordinance. And so what is council's wishes?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to waive the first reading.
Mr. Mayor, public comment?
I had asked earlier at the beginning.
I'm sorry.
And, no, no, no problem. And I'm kind of keep, I was keeping my eye on, but as, as the vice mayor said, just because the vice mayor said, let's, anybody, please raise your hand. I'll stop, I'll stop the motion. But there is a motion on, on the floor from Councilmember Salazar. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
The Vice Mayor Medina has seconded it. May I please, so, and that is to waive the first reading. May I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye. Okay, the first reading has been waived and now we have the introduction of the ordinance for Title VII.
To the chair, I will make a motion to introduce the ordinance for approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Salazar, Medina, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Point clarifications out with the changes that we just discussed also?
I would say the, and the motion and the seconder can correct me, but it was as presented with the staff report. There was no amendments to that. Is that correct, motion and seconder?
That is correct. It was my understanding that none of the discussion led to any changes in, in what's proposed.
There was at least one at the beginning.
Mr. Mayor?
So there was a word change on one of their, earlier on, there was a word change that you turned off.
So, all right, let, okay, let's go to the vice mayor, then I'm going to take it back. And then I'm going to go to the city attorney. Go ahead, vice mayor.
Yeah, I, I thought the city attorney did say a couple of those changes were okay in the wording and, and, but we should be really specific on this. So, so I'll take my, my, my second back.
Yeah, well, let's, yeah, let's.
Let's, let's have clarity. I'm going to have the city attorney. We're going to walk through this. What I understood under, there was a recommendation by Councilmember Mason under page 132 under duties. Attorney Zaffarano had his verbiage of the suggestion and recommendation that, that is what I recall. And does anybody recall any other changes? I think I take care of what we were talking about in the beginning.
But I think to be clear, there was a, perhaps a difference of wording between my recommendation and Councilmember Mason's recommendation. My recommendation was to say, to provide a forum for discussion and provide recommendations regarding traffic studies and reports. But I think Councilmember Mason's suggestion had the word "before" in there so that the TSPC would come ahead of any traffic study or, or report done by staff. And I, I don't, I'm not recommending that.
That is how I recall it as well.
Sorry, not prior, not prior to staff, City Attorney Zaffarano, it's prior to finalizing a study. So if a consultant brings back a study, it would go to the TSPC before it went to the council, if it's even going to go to the council. So essentially, before the study is finalized, the step before finalization is the TSPC.
I believe that's already the practice.
That's, that's what Councilmember Hamilton said after I made the comment. So we can, we can make it a, I mean, we can make it a policy because if it's a practice, it doesn't have to be adhered to.
So if I may interject through the.
Please, city attorney.
Yeah, I think that the difficulty we're going to have here is there may be an entire subset of traffic studies that don't ever go to the TSPC and aren't required to, and there's no reason for them to go. And I'm concerned that, that the proposed recommendation really doesn't, doesn't distinguish among those situations and others in which the recommendation is actually, it's a TSPC item. So without sort of having time to think about how, how many of those items are there, I, I, I wouldn't want to recommend a change that staff really hasn't weighed in on.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yeah, just to, I agree with everything the city attorney just said. The TSPC didn't ever finalize the study. The study was one of the pieces of information that we would use to make, to make a recommendation. So the staff would come, they'd give their report, they would, they, the staff would have a recommendation. And the, and the, the study was the supporting evidence for why they made the recommendation. What we would do on occasion is after reviewing the study, find that it was incomplete in our estimation and direct staff to please go back and do, and, you know, expand the scope of the study or do, do whatever and bring the item back to us again. But we never took any action specifically on a study. And frankly, I wouldn't recommend that we do do that because I think it would hamper the process. I do think what, what's in place now in terms of how the TSPC works with staff regarding the studies, I don't, I don't think anything is broken there. This is based on my, my experience on the community.
My concurring, my, my opinion is in concurrence with the city attorney and, and Councilmember Hamilton on what was just stated. So I won't repeat it.
Okay, helpful. Thank you.
Okay. So there was modification made on page 132 as stated by the city attorney, which he, he reiterated what his recommendation is. Have we all heard that? Are all in sync on that one? Okay. Mark, city attorney, was there anything else that you wanted to bring forward other than that one modification to the document?
No, I, there was another suggestion about the planning commission and park and recommission, which, which we discussed and I wasn't recommending at the time. So.
I, I am not recommending that either myself.
To the chair, just clarification on the first point, then. Are we saying that there will be an adjustment to the, the language regarding the, the committees?
Duties?
Duties. And if so, what, what exactly is staff recommending there?
Mr. Zaffarano, can you please state your recommenda, recommendation of the verbiage?
Sure. And just to be clear, I don't see that my suggestion is changing their duties. I think that these are their duties all along. And so the recommended language would be as follows, quote, "to provide a forum for discussion and provide recommendations regarding traffic studies and reports." So the wording that would be added was, "and provide recommendations regarding." I think that's what the TSPC does now.
Right. Yes. Okay. All right. That's accepted.
I think that's fine. I think if the votes are just saying that we agree with the recommendations, I think they're fine. My comments were more trying to enhance what's, what's already there. So if there's not enough support, then that's understandable. But the staff recommendations are, are, are okay.
Okay. So we've heard and all of a heard and concur that we understand what Mr. Zaffarano said in regards to page 132 under that statement. He's made that clear. Now, that is the only modification to Title VII, the vehicles and traffic, and we're back to the introduction of the ordinance.
All right. So I will reintroduce or remake the motion to introduce the ordinance with the modifications as just described eloquently by Mr. Zaffarano.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Well, that'll make it easy. We'll have the, the Salazar, Medina. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, city clerk, item B.
Item 7B, appoint two members of the city council to serve on the San Bruno Community Foundation Board Nomination Ad Hoc Committee.
Thank you, city clerk. So as you know, we have discussed, it was in the staff report that was provided to us. It was to have two members from the foundation, two members from the city council. I'm asking if Councilmember Hamilton and Councilmember Salazar would be willing to serve on that capacity and report back.
I am willing to serve if the, if my colleagues agree.
I, I, yeah, I'm also willing to serve. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to ask for a motion and a second. Just, to, to me, if there's consensus, I'm fine with that. But if we want to go through the process of a motion and a second, I'm, I'm fine either way, or if there's other discussion on it.
Well, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it, just to make it the weird, as weird as possible.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
To make it weird, I would abstain, but aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number eight, comments from council members. And if, if my colleagues have anything, if you could raise your virtual hand and we'll go around and then I will adjourn the meeting. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, two things. You know, COVID, you know, here we are. We, we have to just bear down a little bit longer. It, it was, sure was nice to, to walk around a little bit with your masks not on. And, and, and I think for my family, I need to be more responsible and even just a bit longer. San Mateo County is doing great, but other parts of the country aren't. So if you have anybody that you know, family, friends, and they're not vaccinated, you know, you can do your best to try to convince them. Some people are adamant, but you know, that's, we have a free country supposedly. So if you can get the, you get vaccinated, do so. And I wanted to again, thank staff and the, the amazing opportunity that Tan Fran has again, but before, before us. And it's a really special time and I, I really hope for the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mason?
Thank you. I just wanted to say look forward to the notice coming out on the opening of the Arts and Culture Committee. So hopefully we'll, I'm not sure when that day is going to be, but we could find out as soon as possible. That would be great. The second request is if we could get our superintendent of schools to give a brief update at our next council meeting, which will likely be the first week of school. Just on what's going on with the San Bruno Park Schools. I spoke with him earlier today and he said he'd be definitely open to coming back or coming to the council and just telling us what's going on with the school year. We have over 2,000 students in the district and we have, if not, you know, if you're not watching the school board meetings, you might have grandparents out there that are interested and just community members who want to know what's going on with our schools. So given the year we've had, I would hope that the rest of the council would be open to that. And I think it would be a, a nice welcome invite. And lastly, I just wanted to also echo what Vice Mayor Medina said. Not, not only because people are vaccinated, but you know, having kids running around, you know, I was just reading about a, a five-year-old who recently passed away because of COVID. And so just remember that our, our kids are still vulnerable, even though they are in a population that is least hit really by COVID, but they are still vulnerable. And remember to wear your masks and kids, you know, kids are all around. My kids have been in the park and rec camps all summer. And I just want to compliment the staff because every single time I've dropped the kids off or picked them up, they are sure that everybody is wearing their masks and that everybody is safe. And the kids have had a really great time at the camps all summer. So thank you and thank you, staff, because I just can't believe what a great job they've done with kids from a very young age, you know, all the way to their teens, ensuring that their masks are on and that they're safe while they're eating. So thank you so much.
Any other comments from council? Okay, then I'll go ahead and first wanted to remind folks as well as be appreciative that August the 6th will be concerts in the park. It is back. And for the month of August, please come Fridays, obviously. Please be respectful, be safe, and, and let's all keep each other healthy. But it'll be something nice to bring back and have that together. The other thing is, is also wanted just to take an opportunity to, we're not, I think all council concurs, we're not out of the woods yet. The senior center opened up Monday. That was nice to see. And to, so things are opening, but also as we watch the news, we need to be mindful. We, we want to keep going forward. We want to keep moving forward together and not backward. So let's all do our part to, to help one another. Finally, tonight, I wanted to go ahead and adjourn in the memory of Judith, or aka Judy Chini. Judy, unfortunately, we, we lost her last Thursday. Services will be held on August the 14th at 1 o'clock. The venue will be announced tomorrow. This is somebody who has done a lot over the last six decades in our, in our community. I met Judy when I was a young person at Cappuccino High School as a student. And she was an involved, very engaged and a very passionate parent at that time. And I've seen her through the decades of her continued commitment to the education system, whether it was with the San Bruno School District Measure X, whether it was getting equipment and band uniforms for parkside and or cap, taking on the Alumni Association with Councilmember Salazar, who was the president. Judith was the vice president. She worked for the high school district. She was on PTAs, so she did the gamut. She was also one who one day called me a while ago and said, hey, do you know what they're doing at the high school district? They're, they're trying to sell the lot, which got me down to San Mateo because we met in person way back then and got me down to be at that meeting and, and let the school board know that they had not reached out as they should. Judith is a person, as I indicated before, it was before the times of Nextdoor or Posting or Twitter or all of those technologies. But what she did do is she did it because of the love, of the passion, of the spirit and of the pride and respect she had for this community that she called home for so long. So it is, to me, the appropriate thing tonight to thank her and for all that she's done and the lives that she has touched. And they will be remembered, not forgotten, and we will, she would say, we will carry the torch on. So with that, if you will join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you very much, colleagues. At this time, we will adjourn to the next regular city council meeting. Keep in mind, it'll be one in August. And that meeting will be held on August 24th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Everyone, please enjoy your evening and be safe.